Select Board, and we will consider ratifying the Town Manager's appointment of Donald Koski to the Groton Country Club Pro Shop staff. At 7:15, we will meet in joint session with the FinCom for a public hearing on the warrants for the fall 2019 town meeting. And then at 7:30, we will have a public hearing to discuss Amelia Way and the road layout. Under other business, we will discuss and resolve the posting of the Select Board meeting packets prior to our meetings. We then have ongoing issues A through M that we may touch upon, and an opportunity for liaison reports. So, under announcements, who's?
I actually have two.
All righty.
Today's sort of a historic day in Groton. For the first time in Groton's, Groton Fire Department history, we have started 24-hour coverage within our fire department. It began at 6:00 a.m. this morning. They started an hour earlier because we usually had coverage at 6 o'clock in the morning, so they wanted to make sure that we continued that for the first day, but they went into effect at 6 this morning. So, for the first time, we will have two full-time firefighter EMTs on duty through the night until tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. And I will tell you that the first day was an extremely hectic day for the department. There were many medical calls. We had ambulances going in many directions. We had power outages. We had radios break down. It was a day to remember, but it is a big day for the Groton Fire Department. I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge that this evening. The second announcement is a proclamation for the Shobwa Valley Technical School District. They are celebrating 50 years as a district. They are asking the Select Board to adopt the proclamation tonight, and with your permission, I'll read it into the record.
Please do.
Whereas, the Shobwa Valley Technical Student School District, which opened its doors to students in 1969, continues to proudly partner with our district member towns of Air, Chumsford, Groton, Littleton, Pepperell, Shirley, Townsend, and Westford to provide a public vocational technical education with a skills advantage. And whereas, the Shobwa Valley Tech District provides the highest quality academic and technical education possible to prepare our students for college and career paths leading to success in the ever-changing technological world. And whereas, the Shobwa Valley Technical School District strives to promote citizenship through a safe and inclusive atmosphere, encouraging a diverse population of students to become positive and productive members of the community. And whereas, the Shobwa Valley Tech School District meets and exceeds the rising need for technical education at the high school and postgraduate levels, and continues to enhance and expand its curriculum to meet the needs of the ever-changing workforce, to meet labor market demands, including courses in advanced manufacturing, dental assisting, design, and visual communications, health assisting, and veterinary education, as well as engineering, robotics, biotechnical fields, and programming and web development. And whereas, the Shobwa Valley Tech District continues to provide quality vocational education in traditional fields such as automotive technology and auto collision repair, carpentry, cosmetology, culinary, early childhood education, electrical, hospitality, plumbing, marketing, and television theater arts. And whereas, the Shobwa Valley Tech District continues to partner with the local businesses and industry as advisory members to enhance the planning and operations of our technical programs, and the continued cooperative placement, work-based leaning, learning experiences for our students, creating future workforce pipelines. And whereas, the Shobwa Valley Tech District enhances technical education with rigorous academic preparedness, meeting or exceeding the guidelines set forth by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and formerly designated as an early college high school by the Massachusetts Department of Education by providing students with the opportunity to earn college credits while enrolled. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the town of Groton, Massachusetts recognizes and celebrates 50 years of excellence at the Shobwa Valley Technical High School during our 2019-2020 school year. And witness whereof, the board sets their hand and causes seal of Groton to be here in a fixed date of September 16, 2019. I'd ask the board to adopt that proclamation and sign it. Please.
I move that we adopt the proclamation as read.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and congratulations to the Shobwa Tech. Yeah.
Before I end it up, I'd like to call the FinCom the session. We have a majority?
Sorry. This Friday will mark the resumption of the Groton Community dinners, which have not been held for the last year. They will continue being held on the third Friday of each month. At the First Parish Church, the dinner is free. This month, the dinner is being supplied by Lawrence Academy. Next month, the dinner will be supplied by Groton School. Dinner is served from quarter of six until seven. It's free, but donations are gratefully accepted.
Thank you for that, Mark.
Just want to mention that we have a new carpenter. His name is Bane, and it's a black lab, and I'm going to be meeting him later this week, from what I understand.
We are going to be appointing him officially next Monday night, so Officer Bane will be here for the board to ratify my appointment next Monday. We're all looking forward to it. So, bones are welcome. Bones are welcome.
Any other announcements? All right, I have a couple. So, at this point, the policy workshop that we talked about last week has been scheduled for October 17th at 6:00 p.m. at the American Legion, which is an FYI.
The American Legion is the Legion of, right?
Yep. Yep, absolutely. I am proposing that this board meet next Monday before our meeting at 5:30, although I'm open to 6 o'clock, to talk about financial guidance, so that this board is kind of on the same page and organized before we meet with the Finance Committee, so folks can look at their calendars and get back to me on that one. And then, just a heads up, I have received a number of emails about the helicopter that landed at the middle school. It's been all over social media. And I want to do two things. One is, I want to clarify that this is not a town issue. This isn't something that the Select Board or the Town Manager really have any role in. This is district property, and it was a district decision. And then, the second thing that I'll just throw out there, I know everyone's heard it, is that, you know, complaints, concerns, and questions on social media are not going to get answers, probably. They're not going to get to the people who are answering these kinds of things in any official capacity. So, you know, if you're just venting, I guess that's one thing, but if you actually have questions and want to have a conversation and come to an understanding, pick up the phone, send someone an email, you know, just an FYI.
Allison, could I add to that?
Yep.
I'll just add that I am a person who did have some questions about the helicopter landing, and I did send an email to the school superintendent. I want to thank her for her very thorough response, and just encourage others if they do have questions. As Allison said, the school superintendent or the school committee are the people to ask.
You had mentioned next week you wanted to meet prior. Is that correct?
That's what I'm throwing out there.
I was going to place it on the agenda for next Monday night's meeting to discuss the guidance, because we meet with the Finance Committee on October 7th for the meeting. So, if you don't want to have a special meeting, I was going to put it on next week's agenda.
I personally think it would be more effective in a workshop setting, but...
Yep. That's fine, whatever the board wants.
I like the workshop setting. All right, I prefer six.
Six o'clock.
So, I had also, I'm fine with that, but I had also talked to Mark about adding an executive session. Had you spoken with the chair about that?
I have not had a chance to.
Well, could DSF...
Rather than delve into the details of that during public session right now, Mark, could you fill the chair in so?
Will do.
You could schedule it?
Absolutely. The executive session could happen at the end. Can see a hold on?
It could happen whenever. It should take five minutes.
So, next Monday night, we start at 6:00 with a workshop on finances. Regular meeting, executive session, which I will talk to you about.
That's what it sounds like at this point.
Okay. I will have, I'm working, I worked all weekend, and I've worked today, and I'll work tomorrow and Wednesday, putting together projections, because the Tribe Board is meeting on Monday at 9:00, to go over FY '21 in more detail, preparing for the Finance Committee and Select Board's budget guidance to me. So, I'll have information for you, so you'll have stuff to look at for that workshop, starting at 6 o'clock next Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements? Public comments? All righty. And, Mark, we can move on to your report.
Absolutely. Item one, item two, rather, has to do with the public hearing that we're going to start in seven minutes, so I'm going to skip over that and come back to that. Item number two, three, rather, is the financial policies. They begin on page, I sent them out to the board two and a half weeks ago. They begin on page 17 of your packet. The way that we have done this traditionally in the past is we review, the Finance Team reviews the financial policies, sends them to the Finance Committee for input. The Finance Committee provides input. We update the policies according to the Finance Committee's input, and then we bring them to the Select Board for review and approval. So, we've done that. The Finance Committee signed off on them, Bud, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
So, the Finance Committee signed off on them two weeks ago, and recommended adoption of those policies by the board. The reason that I'm bringing this to you outside of the board policy workshop that you're going to be doing on the 17th is the Finance Committee had asked that those policies be in place and updated before the financial guidance that the board will be providing, the Select Board and the Finance Committee will be providing to me on October 7th. So, that's why I have it for you tonight. I met with Allison on Friday, and we had an excellent review of all of the policies, and we're putting them into some sort of order for the board. When you have your workshop on the 17th, we'll have a lot of information for you that night, so that's well underway. But the financial policies, Allison did have a bunch of concerns with those policies and a lot of questions. So, I guess the question to the board tonight is, do you want to hold off on adopting them until the board has a chance to review Allison's comments on them? And I have a chance to review those issues with the Finance Committee again before the board adopts them? Or do you want to adopt them as presented tonight, and then review them in the normal course of our review process going forward? I leave it up to the board, obviously.
Bud, did you want to?
Well, yeah, these policies have changed a little bit based on AM 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, these things that are in there. So, they're not just, there are word changes, deletions versus what we submitted that we approved. Our group approved, approved 6 to 0. So, they're not major changes, but I don't know if anyone in the FinCom has picked these up, because they just, you know, came through, and I looked at it, and it was like 5, 4, 5 changes that not just highlighted, but redlined. So, and again, I don't think they're really major, major, but if the FinCom hasn't seen them, I don't want them to say that we can vote on it. They're minor changes, but...
We changed things since the Finance Committee looked at it?
Never had a change since.
Oh.
Yeah, we, the last, the one we voted on was the one that you put out on the 5th.
Yeah, never changed them again.
Yeah, they are, they are changed. Yeah, this, 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 this one, there was this red line that we received in the package, unless there's something different than what you did. Do you have, do you have this one?
I had not changed them since you gave them back to me.
Well, this is the one that was submitted in the package that I received.
Are you sure?
Well, I printed it off. I don't know why you printed it off, if it didn't come from the town.
I may have sent you the wrong thing then. I didn't touch the, I didn't touch them.
Do you have a red line version? Do you have like the first page? That's all you need is the first page.
This is what we got.
We don't have red lines.
You don't?
No, because I took the document that the FinCom approved, and that's what I gave to the board.
This is what was sent out. I'll just take a quick look. Otherwise...
Nope, does that sound like...
No, I'm going to, I'm going to delay the...
Yep.
Yes, he does. What's that?
Was that one right there? That's one of them. Was that deleted off?
Oh, you know what?
Are these my comments, Mark? Is that what the AM is?
Yeah, these are your comments. That's what the comments are.
Congratulations.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
You've gotten an advanced copy of the wisdom of...
You've got an advanced copy of Allison's comments. I didn't change what the Finance Committee voted.
So, we voted on which one?
You voted on what the Finance Committee gave.
That's what Mark is presenting to us, my question.
So, there's the confusion, Bud, I apologize. Allison had a bunch of comments on them.
Yeah.
That we reviewed.
There are actually some good comments, bud.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear...
We voted on the other one.
Yeah.
So, what, what you have in your packet is what the Finance Committee voted 6, 0 to approve. What Bud has is Allison's comments.
So, why would we want to vote on something that Allison has comments on that the FinCom hasn't reviewed her comments on or any of ours?
That's what I'm saying.
So, can we just include that in our workshop of policy review?
That's, I think that's what I said. If I didn't make that connection. Yep.
Well, also, it would help me to see what changes were made from before in this...
I outlined them. I outlined the changes in my Town Manager's report to you when I sent it. There was just, we inserted the OPEP policy, and then there were a couple of minor word changes that didn't have any impact on it whatsoever. There were scrutiny measures that were corrected. So, what you have, the only change from last year's accepted policies is adding the OPEP policy. Allison has concerns with, I said just about everything, but...
I'd be interested.
A number of items. So, if people are comfortable holding this to our workshop, we can kind of delve through this. And at that point, Becky, we can have Mark highlight the specific paragraph or sentences or what have you.
I'll send out what Bud has to the board. Because, Bud, by the way, I just saw Allison's comments on Friday. So, I didn't have those until Friday, so today's Monday, so I haven't even had a chance to...
Does, does holding these, Mark and Bud, till the 17th work in terms of...
Doesn't hurt anything.
Now, let me ask you though, what we're going to hold, are you, is the Select Board now, this red line that we could talk about tonight when we go to the FinCom, the red line stuff? Then there's also the shaded, which is your comments about thinking about this, thinking about that. But you actually made four changes that you redlined. So, the question is, are you going to look at the red lines, which we can talk about? Are you going to look at this whole package?
I think they're going to look at the whole package on the 17th.
So, should we wait until you guys decide what you're going to do? Because I don't want to talk about all the stuff tonight. The four red lines are easy.
I would suggest you wait until the board reviews them on the 17th, comes to a consensus, and then I'll send those off to the FinCom. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
Because the board may not agree with Allison.
Absolutely.
They may.
Okay.
Stay tuned. John?
I'm a little concerned that I didn't hear from anybody that this initiative was underway. I don't know if an assumption is made that everybody on the Board of Selectmen would know that annually we do this. We do turn over members of the board with some regularity, and newbies like me, I don't know anything about that. And it would seem to me that when we initiated what I consider to be a review of some, a major document, it ought to show up somewheres telling us this is getting underway.
The charter that was adopted by the town meeting two years ago outlined within the financial part of the Finance Committee that the financial policies are to be reviewed and updated annually. So, it's been the board's practice, it was in the charter that was adopted by the town meeting, and so I made the wrong assumption, obviously, that everybody was aware that this was the process. So, I apologize. But it was in the charter that was adopted by the town meeting.
Let's try and be more careful about these things, please.
Mark, did you say you sent a, something a couple of weeks ago, an email?
Yep. I sent an email to the board two weeks ago with the financial policies, telling you I was planning on bringing it to you this evening.
Right, so, and that it was an annual thing?
Yep. I thought I'd said that in a memo, but John didn't understand it. I didn't do a good job relaying that to the board.
Well, you did, but at that point, it had already been come back from the Finance Committee and you. So, that looked to me like it was a close, close deal. Read and decide, as opposed to having an opportunity to even have some conversation with members of the Finance Committee prior to this all getting closed up and put in the envelope. So, let's do better.
The Groton Select Board has scheduled a joint public hearing with the Finance Committee for Monday, September 16th at 7:15 p.m. Groton Town Hall, 173 Main Street. Select Board's meeting room, second floor, Groton, Mass. The purpose of this hearing will be to discuss the articles contained in the October 21st, 2019 Fall Town Meeting warrant. Public hearing notices may be found in Mass Newspaper Publicist Association. All interested parties are encouraged to attend Groton Select Board, Allison Manugian Chair. I'd ask the board to open the public hearing. I'd also ask the Finance Committee to open their portion of the public hearing.
Do we need a vote to do that, Mark?
Yes.
I move that we open the public hearing on the warrant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
In an effort to help everybody get through this public hearing, I sent out my Town Manager's report to the Finance Committee last week. I also sent this as part of the board, so what I would like to do is utilize this, go through each one of the articles with my comments here, answer any questions. You see several department heads are here, and proponents of our articles are here to answer any questions. The one thing I did send out to the board last week is the citizen's petition was removed, withdrawn, rather, from the warrant, and you see the 10 signatures. I think I sent that out to the board last week, letting you know that it was, that it was done. So, I'd like to start with Article 1, walk through it, and answer any questions that you have. On Thursday, when I put this together, there was one unpaid bill for $150 to A1 Odd Jobs for three banners that were hung in June 2019 on Main Street Friday afternoon. The town accountant informed me that there was another bill. Do we know what that bill is?
Waste zero.
Can you grab the microphone, Trish? Sorry.
Do you have a copy?
Or sit down at the table up here, that's fine, too.
So, this bill is for waste zero for $3,045. It's dated April 11, 2019, to the DPW for the Groton 32-gallon drawstring bags that we, for the transfer station. Somehow, this bill got lost in the shuffle and was not paid, so this will be added to the warrant as well.
Okay.
So, those are two unpaid bills. It requires a 9/10 vote of town meeting for approval. Are there any questions on those bills?
A 9/10 vote?
9/10 vote.
Okay.
So, pretty much has to be a unanimous vote, or they don't get paid.
All right. Doesn't look like questions or comments.
Any questions from the Finance Committee? Article 2 is a proposal to amend the fiscal year 2020 town operating budget. There were two proposed amendments that would cause a tax levy increase to the budget. The first amendment is to add $13,000 to the town accountant's budget to pay for additional licenses and software upgrades to our accounting software package. This is in line with what the board, when we met with the department heads last July, proposals to improve the way we do business. Mike Chason and Patricia talked to our software vendor. We originally thought it was going to be $20,000. They got it down to, to $13,000. If the board and town meeting agrees to do this, it will add 1 cent to the tax rate and add $4.59 to the average tax bill. The debt service increase of $70,393 is excluded debt, and this is for the DPW garage and the library roof, the bans that the board adopted or approved a couple of weeks ago. As you know, when we, when we went to town meeting in the spring to set the budget, we had no idea if those articles would pass town meeting or would pass the debt exclusion vote, so we could not budget for that at that time. We had to wait to see what happened. The plan was always to do bans in the, in the fall, which we did, come back in the spring to permanently finance that if they pass, and then it would impact the fiscal year 2021 budget, the full boat principal and interest on both projects. So, this $70,393 is what the board approved in July when we did those bans. It will add 4 cents to the tax rate, because it is an excluded debt, so it's outside the levy, and it'll add $18.36 to the average tax bill. Those are the two proposals that we are making with regard to the budget amendments. Later on, in Article 10, I believe I sent out a request for consideration on the assessors' cyclical inspections. We'll get to that when we get to Article 10 to talk about how we want to fund that. That could be in the Article 2 as well, if you want to do it that way, or, or another means to support that. So, those are the two that we're proposing. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has with those, those two issues.
So, I don't, I don't have a question, and Mark and I had had some of these conversations earlier. I personally think I support the accountant software upgrade. I think that that amount could probably be found in the operating budget, so I personally don't think that this needs to go forward as a, an increase to the tax levy, but just my two cents. Yep, just grab a microphone, please.
I don't understand why $13,000 has to go to a tax levy increase if it's for a one-time purchase. That $13,000 will get added to the levy forever.
Oh, maybe I wasn't clear. That $13,000, $10,000 of that is annual renewal of the licenses, so $10,000 of that will be paid every year, and the budget is an annual cost. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, please grab the microphone.
Mark, in the spring town meeting, proposed warrant, proposed budget, there was $33,000 in free cash approved. So, are you suggesting here we increase that number from $33,000 to...
This does not have anything to do with free cash. The $33,000 that was approved at the spring town meeting in the operating budget, $25,000 of that was to pay for the increases, the performance incentive increases, the one-time payments to the department heads. Remember, we changed that as a one-time payment, and the other 8,000 was to cover leap-year expenses, because it was an extra day in the year. We had a budget for that extra day for the hourly employees, so that has nothing to do with this.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, it's just a math thing. If $13,000 adds 1 cent, why doesn't $70,393 add 5 cents?
It's rounding, Dr. It's a rounding thing.
Looking at it.
Yeah, no, no. Listen, when it comes to math, I don't question you.
Other things you do.
Other things, not math.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I didn't think of it, but how does rounding get that...
It's just the way it's, because you've got to remember, yeah, it's, it could be 4.5 cents or 4.7 cents, or actually, plus the 4.5 cents. And so, it came down to 4 cents, and that 1 cent could have been 0.6 cents or something. You know what I mean? Sixth of a cent. So, it's just a way it rounds the tax rate.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments on Article 2?
Article 3, the Water Commission will be seeking a transfer from their excess and deficiency fund of $150,000 to pay for engineering costs to provide solutions to the most, particularly the iron and manganese issue. I will say that I sent this out on Friday. Our free cash was certified at $1,335,000?
$1,335,000.
Yep, $1,335,000. Water surplus was certified at $363,000. I think that was in that memo as well that I sent out to the board. So, this is going to take a hit in the water surplus, but the Water Commission is in the process of reviewing their rates, and there is an old article that will be closed out to their water surplus, about $68,000 at the end of next fiscal year to replenish their, their water surplus. So, between a rate increase in that, I'm not too nervous about the $150,000 coming out, but this is a major expenditure for the water department. They could ultimately lead to a $7 million issue, as the board knows. Tommy is here tonight to answer any questions that the Finance Committee, the Select Board will have, but this is specifically to deal with the iron and manganese issue. And I will tell you, as the board knows, that on September 24th? September 26th, Tom and I and one of the Water Commissioners will be meeting with DEP in Worcester to discuss the overall approach that the Water Commission is going to be taking, and I'll report back to the, to the board after that. So, Tommy's here, will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, you said that $68,000 was going to get closed out? Is that the number you just said?
68 or 69,000? Yeah.
And then, I also heard you said, say, that between the closeout money and the water rate increase...
Potential. I think I used the word potential. If I didn't, I apologize.
You didn't use the word potential. So, can I ask what water rate increase are we considering? Mark said that between the money that's going to be closed out at the end of the next fiscal year, that would replenish some of the money from your E and D account. But he also said, and the water rate increase. And then he said, the potential increase. And I asked, what potential water rate increase?
So, kind of putting the cart before the horse a little bit here. We do meet with DEP in September. We have a plan and a schedule presented to them. We'll receive a consent order once they accept the schedule we're presenting. And that plan is four to five years out for construction or mitigation. We obviously want to get this done as soon as we can. It is a huge financial impact to the ratepayers to raise seven and a half million dollars on a 20-year note. It's in the neighborhood of $500,000 of additional debt we have to take on. We have $400,000 in debt right now. There has to be a rate increase to bridge this project. We're trying to phase it in, and we're hoping DEP will accept that so we can get some of the work started earlier. But there will need to be rate increases in order to do this. You can't get around it.
So, as much.
I can't tell you what those will be.
I know you can't, but as much information as you can get out there on the town website about the knowledge that the commissioners and you have for what the increases may be in order to cover the debt service, the earlier people will be able to brace themselves rather than when they open that first bill and they say, whoo. You might want to get that word out there.
So what we're trying to do is to phase the construction so the impacts will be minimal so we can kind of bridge some of the upstrun, upfront construction and engineering with a smaller impact until the $400,000 comes off our operating budget and go right into the next phase. So it's, we're trying to minimize the impacts. They're not, we believe they're workable in years one and two. And if we raise rates come November, we can start to build up some of our engineering money and move it right into construction phase. So it is a, it is a mitigation plan that we're looking at and phasing the construction to minimize those impacts.
Again, just getting a memo like that out of your water bills will go a long way.
Yeah, we'll have a public hearing. It has to be advertised, and we'll look for public input, obviously. We're looking at different options of how we capitalize this or how we fund this capital project. Anything I put on the website needs to be get pre-approved by DEP unless it's something that came directly from DEP. So we're working on some things right now behind the scenes. I've got emails and conversations with DEP Thursday and Friday of last week and follow-up emails. I have not received a response, but as soon as I get responses, it's going to go to our website, and that's where we, where we want people to go. You're going to find the information right there. The draft, the letter we sent to DEP back in August is up on our website and talks about what our plan is, so there's information you can glean there. But any new information that we have to get pre-approved from DEP before we put it up there. And we have some things that are, we, we have, we're working on, we're just waiting for a response.
Thank you.
Can you stay there, Tom, for a minute?
Sure.
And then we're going to call a halt to this for a moment to open the public hearing.
Yeah, that's, the Select Board. Select Board has scheduled the public hearing for Monday, September 16, 2019, 7:30 PM, Groton Town Hall. Select Board's meeting room, second floor, 173 Main Street, Groton, Mass. The purpose of this hearing will be to discuss laying out Amelia Way as a public way as contained in the October 21, 2019 fall town meeting warrant. Copies of the plans are in file in the land use department at the Groton Town Hall. All interested parties are encouraged to attend Groton Select Board. I'd ask the Select Board to open the public hearing and continue it until we get to Article 16 on the warrant.
So moved, can we do both of those in one motion? He says yes.
Is there a second?
You have to open it and then continue it. I'm sorry, you have to open it and then continue.
All right, I move that we open the public hearing on laying out Amelia Way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we continue the public hearing until the conclusion of, what did you say?
When we get to Article 16.
Article 16. Or until we get to Article 16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
So returning back to the water, and I've seen a couple of hands at least. We had kind of talked last week, I think, about getting an understanding as to what the different models would look like potentially, whether it's all ratepayers, whether there's, whether there are other options. Is that still in the works? And how do we, I understand that DEP has a huge role in this. How, how do we make sure that kind of the Select Board is, is on board with what's going to DEP before it comes back as a fait accompli?
Well, in terms of the, the financial impact, given the major undertaking that the town is going to take on potentially with the Florence Roach Elementary School project and some of the budget issues that we're having, I don't see any capacity for the town to share in this cost. Now, that's up to the board and the Finance Committee and town meeting to ultimately decide and voters, but at this time, I think this is a water issue, ratepayer issue for the water, ratepayers to, to determine. There is no capacity for us to take that on at this time. That said, until we understand what DEP is going to require, though, I think the water commissioners put a plan in place that if they can wait until they expire the plant debt, which as Tommy pointed out is $400,000, this would just slide in and it won't be that major an impact to the ratepayers because we're replacing current debt with new debt, maybe a little bit more, but, but $100,000 or something. But at this time, I don't see the town sharing in that cost, given some of our financial obligations that are coming down the bike. That's just my opinion.
And, and what is the order of operations in terms of, you know, DEP getting a, a look at the plan and understanding it and us getting a look at the plan and understanding?
So, the, the draft we spot went to DEP in the middle of September. That is on our website.
Okay.
You can read the response that was submitted on behalf of the water department engineers. So that's there. That's what we're going to be discussing with them and the schedule and the mitigation. There will be a consent order that the town will receive based on that plan that we've presented.
If they adopt that.
If they adopt that.
They can say no.
They could say no, they, they could have a different plan, a shorter plan, and we'll have to deal with that.
But once.
That's a negotiation.
So, so they have the ability to say yes or no and kind of negotiate that? And then we at the town level are just bound by that? I mean, there's no.
They have the ability to negotiate with us on the schedule, yes.
But it's ultimately their decision. In a previous town that I worked in, the DEP came down and said, you need to do these things. The town refused to do what they directed. And the DEP took us to court and we got a consent order from the courts that forced us to do something which was a lot more expensive than what we had originally set out. So there is a negotiation that has to happen with DEP right now. So, they have the plan, we're going to meet with them. Hopefully they'll work with us on, on the water commissioner's plan to deal with this over the next five years before they take on the full impact of the, of the cost.
Does the Select Board have any role in that negotiation or is it water commissioners?
I believe it's water commissioners.
It's the water commissioners, but I believe the town signing the consent order to Select Board. I don't believe the water commissioners sign the consent order to town.
That I'm not sure about.
That's what I'm, that'd be something we have to figure out and signs. But typically, it's not simply the water commissioners signing.
Mark, can you and Tom kind of figure out this process and let us know what to expect and in what order and et cetera, et cetera? John?
Number one, so long as there's even consideration that any portion of this expense would be shared by non-water taker taxpayers, everything should be visible to everybody. And I'm not sure we're doing a very good job of that. That's number one.
I'm under the assumption this is going to be a ratepayer project.
Yes, but until your assumption turns into something firm, we need to keep everybody informed because this is a big expense that could fall in a number of places.
I think we've done a job of that, John. Everything's on the website that people need to see regarding the manganese issue. I can't get into the specifics on the schedule.
No, they need to get into the financial issues.
We won't know that until we negotiate with DEP what that plan looks like. That's why I said we kind of put the cart before the horse.
What I'm saying, so long as, well, well, we aren't putting the cart before the horse because we've got to figure out some way to pay for this, okay? So we can't create the horse and then say, oh, where's the money going to come from? So those things got to work together.
I don't even know what they want us to engineer yet. That's why I'm saying we're putting the cart before the horse. We don't know if they'll accept the plan. We won't build at the Vatican or Whitney. They won't, I don't know what they want yet.
Okay, and I'm just warming you up for my expectation of once that's done, this becomes very visible to everybody. And, and, and the other point that I wanted to make here is, if the enterprise fund fails for some reason, whatever it is, can't pay its bills, it defaults to all the taxpayers in the town of Groton. So regardless of what the water commissioners say they're got all the control of, we are the cosigners for that activity and we are entitled to know everything. And we need to make that real clear and live to it. Thank you.
I'm just going to go around, Josh.
So, what you're currently proposing is a treatment facility at $7 million is for discussion purposes. And how many wells does the town now have pumping?
We have two sources, two wells at Whitney Pond and one at Batac.
So the wells that have an issue are the ones at Whitney Pond, correct?
Correct.
And the one at Batac looks fine.
That's already treated water, part of manganese.
So, so the water commissioner is contemplating potentially an intermunicipal connection with the town of Dunstable, who is flush with water up the wazoo, and might cost a tremendous amount less money, and then you can abandon your infrastructure that you have at your Whitney Wells and what the cost would be. So you can do a cost analysis of the two.
Well, we haven't looked specifically at Dunstable, but we did look at other wells in Groton, and the financial impact was probably not feasible to do that. We, we could look, we could relook at Dunstable.
It certainly, you know, the Mass Municipal Association, the government, they all want us to look at cost sharing between communities going beyond town lines. And certainly Dunstable could use some revenue, and if the cost offset from getting that water from Dunstable saved the ratepayers money and didn't put the burden on the taxpayers in any way, shape or fashion, it's certainly worth looking at. I'm just throwing it out there.
We'll do that. Thank you, Josh. That's, we haven't looked, we haven't considered that one. We will.
Becky?
So, I would just like to say at this point that I think at some point, and I understand it can't be yet, a, a bigger conversation about the potential of cost sharing versus having the ratepayer shoulder the entire cost needs to be had. And I'll point out, Mark, that by saying that the town has no capacity to absorb further expense for their responsibility, the ratepayers are a, a big chunk, are a chunk of the town. So if we're saying that the town has no capacity to participate in this, the ratepayers who have to pay their share of the town's full capacity are be, will be asked to absorb quite a lot. And before we, you know, do too much of, well, if it's, if it's all on the ratepayers and we don't need to think about it or we don't need to be public with all the information, John, I don't think we need to be public with all the information either way.
I don't believe I said we don't need to be public with information.
No, I'm talking about John Geiger's summit.
Oh, oh, okay.
But, well, I, you know, I, with all respect, the town may be stretched and unable to absorb further debt, but a portion of the town will then be asked to absorb quite a lot of further debt. And I think we need to have a larger conversation about this at some point down the road when we have more specifics about it.
I, I think, Becky, that, once we have an idea of what DEP is looking at, and some of that will have to be an executive session, once, after the 25th, when we need, that we'll have a better understanding of what they're looking for, and we'll be better informed to inform you.
That would be good. Do not, though, just, I thought you guys said earlier that decisions come out of, of the 26th meeting.
Right.
So, so my concern is.
25th or 26th?
It, it doesn't really matter for this conversation. My concern at this point is that coming out of that meeting with DEP, there are going to be agreements that the Select Board is not aware of that, and, and that, I guess, is a problem for me.
Can I, can I just interrupt for one second? There's only going to be one water commissioner at that meeting with DEP. DEP is going to look at the plan that the water commission supplied. That has to come back to the town, and the water commission is going to have to review it and decide if they want to move forward with it. The Select Board will be informed of, of what, what took place. We're not going to make a decision on 25th. We're going to have a pretty good idea of where DEP is headed, but they're not going to have a final decision. There's only one water commissioner that's going to be there, so no, no, the town can't be bound on that day. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, and, and we probably will have a joint executive session on the matter.
And what is, what is the harm to potentially doing that before the DEP meeting? So that if there are ideas such as what Josh just suggested, that that's kicked around beforehand?
Why would such a meeting have to be an executive session in negotiating a potential, in negotiating a potential settlement with the state, which is a legal issue? So that negotiation would probably be an executive session.
Do we know why, do we know why this happened? Why we got this huge spike in manganese?
Because of the drought.
Something that has to do with the drought. You know, it's, the Whitney Wells were constructed back in 1989, I believe, so over, you know, a four-year period, intense pumping and drawing in more minerals into the site, and the drought certainly captivated everything.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? If you can come?
Thank you.
So just before we move off of that, I'm, I'm still just extremely uncomfortable with what I, I feel that, that this board has for information and potentially what the, the public may have as well. I, I'm concerned that we're, we're, we're starting down a path that's going to get us in trouble.
What kind of trouble?
Um, just, just that if we're, if we're already this kind of behind the scenes in terms of discussions and alternatives and how we got here and what the engineering report was and what the alternatives are and what those costs are, if that's all already kind of secretive, that's not going to go anywhere good as we get closer and closer to needing some sort of approval for $7 million of something at some point.
Well, I'll, I should get as much information as we have up on the website. Like I said, a lot of this stuff has to be pre-approved by DEP before we put it up there, and, and we'll, we'll do our work diligently to get it up there. I promise you that.
Don't forget to talk to Dunstable, please.
Yes.
Article four, Mark?
It's anticipated this time this article we were drawn from consideration, but I want to leave it on the warrant just in case something comes up before town meeting. So, I have nothing else on that.
John?
Since we have two sewers systems, and I understand they each have their own accounts, they're, they're separate enterprise funds, okay? It needs to be clear on all these publications which enterprise fund we're referring to, the town center fund or the four corner, four corners fund at the point, because I'm not sure, as I read this, which sewer enterprise fund we're talking about.
I agree. Any other questions on four? All right, Article five?
Article five is to transfer money into the capital stabilization fund. The current balance is $171,958. The financial policy stated the capital stabilization fund should be 1.5% of the town's operating budget, which is $39,811,627. That would mean the fund would have to have $597,175, which would require a minimum contribution of 425,217. Josh had asked last week at the meeting when we reviewed the warrant, what the fiscal year 21 plan called for. It actually calls for $901,240 in proposed requests. During the budget process, we'll probably reduce it down to about $500,000 with a goal of leaving $200,000 in the fund for emergencies. Therefore, I'm going to be requesting, I, I am requesting a transfer of $500,000 from free cash to the fund in FY '21. Josh, you also had asked last week for anticipated items. Obviously, this is subject to change. I presented you with things that we would like to bring forward in the capital budget, which of course will be reviewed by the, hopefully this new capital budget committee we're creating and the Finance Committee and the Select Board. But to answer Josh's question last week, this is the things that are, we're, we're thinking about for next year. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So, Mark, just to clarify, when you say during the budget process, it will be reduced to around $500,000? You're talking about the, the balance and capital stabilization or the proposed capital plan total?
The request would be reduced from $901 to about $513,000. Because right now, if you look at, if you go online and look at the capital budget for fiscal '21, the five-year budget, fiscal '21 has $901,000 worth of proposed requests. We can't afford $901,000. So during the budget, when I meet with the department heads and the various boards and committees, and I put together the charter required capital plan to the Select Board and the Finance Committee, I will probably bring it in around $500,000. And these are the items that I think at this time, and again, it's subject to change, what I think will be coming forward.
So this is your first cut at pass at taking from 900 down to just roughly 500?
Yeah.
Okay.
What items have you?
Left out.
Left out.
Excellent question. Uh, there was a repair to the library parking lot. There was a repair to engine five refurbishment. That's a bulk of, that's about $270,000 of, of it.
And are those being canceled or delayed?
We're going to have to delay them, obviously. Those are the, those are the two that, that come to my mind, Josh. But obviously, we have a lot to, to talk about with the departments when we, when we start the budget process. So that's why I'm requesting $500,000.
Okay. Are there questions, comments? Yeah?
Mark, were all of these areas in the last five-year capital?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Taken from that plan, David, absolutely.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
I think we discussed this last year. It says always paint the police station, but are they putting up those permanent kinds of clapboards?
Yeah, this is more, this is more so the roof of the police station, replacing the roof, not, not so.
Well, it says paint.
Well, that's how it's listed in the capital plan. Understood, but it's, it's more, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, it's replace the roof at the? the...
Yeah, save the police society.
And the, the capital budget should be for '20 that's on the website somewhere, correct?
It's, it's, if you go into the Tom Managers page and you look at budget, it'll be right there. Go into the Tom Managers page on the website, and that's the capital budget.
All right, are there other questions? Yeah, sorry.
If the country club was an enterprise fund, would the $80,100 even be on here?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of your sentence.
Would these items in the capital stabilization fund even be on here, the country club roof, the golf carts and the mowers? If it was an enterprise?
If it was an enterprise fund, it would be part of their enterprise budget that town meeting would have to approve. We're not ready to make the country club an enterprise fund. We had one good year, I'm hoping for two and three good years before we start considering that.
So it'll be several years out before, hopefully.
I'd like to have a couple of years of momentum with the club. I mean, we had a great year in fiscal '19. We're off to a good start in fiscal '20. Anything that we budget for the country club will be part of, when I bring the budget forward, revenues will hopefully offset that $80,000 that we're going to be asking for next year.
Okay.
Other questions? Marlena, another Josh?
Forgive my memory if it's older than I am, but I remember the municipal audit called attention to what our town values. And I recall the country club being very low on the totem pole on those items of, of value. And what I'm confused about is, I'm hearing several years down the line, let's see about enterprise fund, which is fantastic if, if that's what the community wants. I don't feel that the community has told us what they want. I don't think I've ever seen it on a ballot question to explain what they want, much like we did with the marijuana questions. And I just want to throw that out there. I think there's an assumption of what we want, and I don't think the residents have actually voiced that opinion properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh?
So, under the country club again, the triplex mower is either the fourth or fifth year of the five-year deal, something like that. But the golf carts, they were paid for. That's done. So are these the new golf carts?
I have to replace them. We've had them for six years. This is going to be a new lease.
So what happens to the oldest golf carts you want to replace?
Those get traded in, so it's the new carts.
Have you ever thought about selling the old golf carts off to the public in order to finance the new golf carts?
We'd have to do a public auction. We can, oh, absolutely. Not a bad idea.
Very serious, because people with big properties in Groton, and somebody might want a golf cart.
Not a bad idea. You can have an auction.
So you might be able to auction off the old carts, raise the money, and buy the new golf carts and lower the number.
Well, that would have to go into the general fund, go through a free cash certification rule, but I understand your point. Not a bad idea, Josh.
I'm sure you could use a golf cart.
All depends on what is going to get better value for the town, because we now have to go out and do like a Kelley Blue Book value on everything, so.
Just something to look at. Oh, I think it's a great idea.
Other questions, comments on article five? All righty, onward.
Article six, our financial policy calls for 5%, which means at 1,990,000. Right now, there's 1,988,000 in the stabilization fund. It's important to keep this at 5% as we plan to go out for major bond issue. Wall Street wants to see us adhere to our financial policies. Yes, it sounds ridiculous to transfer 2,546 dollars into the account. Allison and I had a lively conversation earlier today on that particular subject. I'm going to assume that by town meeting, the interest may cover that, and we may be at 5%. So I just gave you what our financial policies call for. So we probably will not need this article, but that's the number. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the number.
When's the last time we tapped into stabilization?
I can tell you. It is when we appropriated money to pay for the Groton Dunstable technology plan, and then the light department ended up paying us back some of that money, or they ended up offsetting some of that cost. We immediately replenished that fund in the fall to get it back up to the 5%. That was the last time we tapped into it.
I think they all paid $100,000.
They did, and I think we paid 100, 250. I think the total cost was 350, I think. But that's when you guys bought all the new computers and stuff. It was a great, it was a good use of the stabilization fund.
When Dunstable, Groton, all that went together, it was a bigger number than that, if I remember right.
Any other questions on that?
Do you guys have questions on article six, or? No? All right.
Article seven, this is the Groton Dunstable Regional School District Capital Stabilization Fund. The current balance is 214,000. The district capital plan for next year requires the town's portion of 475,000 to pay for that plan. Therefore, we'll need to appropriate 261,000 from free cash to cover the town's expenses in FY '21. That is keeping with what we've done the last, this will be the third year, very successful. And I know the district has really done a good job with their capital plan over the last several years. They've really started to upgrade their stuff, which is great.
Can we get a copy of the 475,000 worth of requests?
Yep.
Other questions, comments?
Mark, is the intent with, with this fund to kind of run it permanently, in, in the sense of putting away this year what's needed next year?
That had been the plan, but last year, we put a little bit extra money in there because we had a healthy free cash position, and we knew going into, or at least we anticipated going into fiscal '20, that our free cash wasn't going to be as strong. So we wanted to make sure we were able to cover the district's plan. So last year, you remember, they only needed 421,000 in the plan, and we ended up putting 600,000 in there last year to cover in anticipation of this year's plan, I believe. I hope everybody recalls that from last year. Those of you who are on the board, I know we, John's a new member.
Is it possible to, will it be possible to use that money when it comes time to be paying for a new school?
There's, there won't be anywhere near enough money in that stabilization fund.
I know, but will it be, if we build that up more at this point, does that become available?
For anything having to do with the district's capital, sure, but I don't know how I would get that higher.
Well, I'm not saying we could get that high to pay the whole thing, but just, there's, is there a value in, in letting it build up more and more?
Well, if we could put a little bit of extra money into this, you'll see at the end of this presentation what the balance in free cash is going to be. There's a couple of things that we have to use that for at the Springtown meeting to cover certain costs. I'll talk about that. If we could put a little extra money in there, Becky, makes perfect sense to do that.
Marlena? Grab the microphone, please.
So I just wanted to add to information for Becky. So there, the MSBA is helping us a great deal with the cost of the actual school, but what I want to make sure, and there's going to be a little bit, working on information to try and really broadcast this out, that the MSBA is giving us 48% to build the school, but the actual furnishings in the school, they do not do anything for that. The actual playground that will be necessary for an elementary school, they will not help build that at all. And we know from just even a ballpark look at what Dunstable built over there at Twala Union for both our kids' and theirs, to attend Twala Union at that playground, that was $325,000. So just to give you a hindsight, not that I ever think that we have the time to actually build this up to that, there is value in, it'll get, it will certainly get used, because unfortunately, MSBA does not reimburse us 48% on everything.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
Article eight, this is a thing that the board had asked to be put on. The lighted sign in front of the middle school, Florence Road, $15,000. I'm recommending that the funding for this comes from free cash. You will notice if you're going up and down Main Street in front of the Main Street Cafe, the new crosswalk signs were installed. And I saw three people use them today, and Kaz actually stopped, so it was very safe.
Go ahead, John.
Want to make sure that article eight, the, the amount of money there will, will get for that intersection down by the church and, and the middle school, the big, the brightest, the, the, what we put in out here is great because we had this, this real space problem between the sidewalk and the buildings.
This is similar to what you have in every other location on Main Street.
That's what I want to make sure of.
Yep.
Becky? Don't, don't go anywhere.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Becky?
Yeah, two questions on that. When those things are malfunctioning, who addresses that?
None of ours is malfunctioning. Our's kept in case here, they're special operator.
Well, those, in my mind, those are, okay, right. The other question is, this is in front of the schools, we need it for the schools. Is there any wisdom in asking the school district to contribute to this?
Well, it's our street, it's our responsibility, so at this point, no. But I don't, I don't know what the reaction would be from the schools.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mark, is, I had mentioned to you briefly, is there a plan to get the, the striping on the crosswalk there and the word "school" to get that back up on there?
That'll be requested by the state. They do the crosswalk, so they didn't do it there.
That's, the state maintains that section of the road, of 119. That's a state road. That section is a state.
And we can't just?
We could ask.
We can ask.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Other questions?
You can ask the state to paint the word "school" in the crosswalk, but you can't ask the state to put a lighted intersection sign up?
They won't do it. They'll put just the normal signs.
And, and what is, what prevents us from just going out there and painting? I mean, just...
It is the state right of way. I don't know, what, what prevents us from doing it, Tom?
That doesn't make any sense.
We could. It's, it's there, it's, it's something that was there, will then be paved. It's one of their regular maintenance signs, so they will replace it. If it was something new, like that other lighted sign, everybody wants those, and they're not going to go replace those. It doesn't take anything for them to go replace, paint the markings, but as you see those lighted signs, if they did one of those, they're going to go for everybody. But yes, we could just go paint it ourselves. I said it's just...
I mean, I don't know what the cost is, but at this point, we don't have the, the lighted crosswalk like we have everywhere else in town. We also have school zone with no school. I mean, it just, there's an O.
There's signage up. I mean, all the signage is up. The only thing that's missing is the white word "school" on the road, but all the signs are up.
There's an O. There's an O in the road, but that's all.
It's but.
Oh.
Yeah, exactly. It's an ozone. All right.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Article nine, this article is a placeholder in the event that additional funding is needed for the installation of the sprinkler system at the Prescott School. Currently, we're anticipating that bids will be due the week before town meeting, and working with Bruce, the plan was to hire an engineer to design the system and go out to bid at the end of September, with bids due on October 16th, so that we would have bids in hand to go to town meeting to see if there is enough money left in the account. There's 240,000 in there right now. Bruce and I approved a contract based on bids that were received for an engineering company from Littleton, actually had the bid, BLW Engineering?
BLW Engineering?
Yep, out of Littleton, Mass. $33,100. That bid came in on Thursday of last week. I reached out to the people after I got their bid and said, "We need your design by September 25th in order to get the bid out." And the engineer said they could do it. Josh, you have a look, a critical look on your face.
You just threw a number, $33,100 out for that, but isn't that the number from article 10?
Interesting that they're the exact same number.
It's extremely interesting.
But 33,100 is the bid for the engineer. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce.
No, that's not correct. It's 38,000.
38,000, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mark.
Thank you, Josh. Well, I had that number in my head. It's 38,000. That, 38,000 to the engineering. Thank you, Bruce. That will come from the 240. That leaves us a balance of about $200,000 to do the sprinkler system. Anything in excess of that when we open the bids on the 16th, the CPC has agreed to consider funding, and that's why we put this article on the warrant. But it looks like we're going to be able to go out to bid and have bids in hand for town meeting, which is what our hope was. I want to thank Bruce. Bruce has been working really hard on this. A lot of volunteer effort on Bruce's part to help me get through this, so thank you very much, Bruce.
Questions, comments? I'll just reiterate my ongoing concern that because we don't have a long-term final plan for the building, I'm concerned that things like sprinkler work may end up being torn out and redone, but that's not news to anyone, but I'm concerned with that. Onward.
Article 10, 33,100. Josh, that's no longer the number.
It was 38,000.
No, 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 no. The 11,500 on the map upgrade, the one-time expense, I met this afternoon with Allison and Jonathan and Takashi, and our current vendor will get that as part of our deal with them. So we don't need the 11,500. That is if we were going to go to a different vendor. We're going to stay with the current vendor for this year to get the maps upgraded, so we don't need that. So what we do need is the 21,600. And as I pointed out to the board last week, and Jonathan's here to answer questions, we need to go and inspect every home in town over a five-year period to comply with Department of Revenue Regulations in terms of annual values and the valuation, the overall valuation of the town, which determines the property tax rate. So every, every year, we want to do a fifth of the town, so that when the five-year, bless you, so when the five-year period hits, we have every town in, in compliance. So we want to bring in our, our vendor from Vision to do these cyclical inspections. It will cost us $21,000 a year. So the question I posed about the select board and the finance committee, since this is an annual expense, do you want it in the operating budget? Or do you want to come back each fall and appropriate that fund out of, you know, appropriate the money out of free cash? So that's the question, and I'm looking for input and feedback from both the select board and the FinCon. And Jonathan's here to answer any questions you have.
Good.
Well, we haven't gone through this yet, but I, I think the way we've done this in the past is that I believe this should be in the budget as an annual expense, and I don't see why in free cash this particular item.
The reason it's not in the budget this year is we didn't, we didn't know when the full measurement list was going to be completed. So they completed it actually earlier. We had until, they had until next year completed. That's why it wasn't in the budget, the cyclical inspections was not in the budget. So this 21,600 is to continue our yearly cyclical inspections. We did the full measurement list to get the database right. Now we have to continue this moving forward.
Is that on a contract basis because the amount stays the same?
Yeah, it should be, it should be relatively, yeah, I mean, unless they, it's done by parcel. So if they went up 50 cents per parcel, then it would go up, but they try to stay pretty stable with their inspections.
Josh?
I 86% agree with, but only in so much as when you formulate your budget for next year, I think that it could be part of the operating budget. However, I would hate to see us amend the operating budget right now and increase taxation to the taxpayer this year in order to comply with the needs, so therefore, I think the free cash should be the funding mechanism for this time.
And then build it into the 21 budget.
I don't know if the FinCon would be willing to discuss that, but...
Discuss it. We will.
Yeah, I need, just give me feedback on how you want me to draft motions, because if, if we put it in the operating budget, we do have excess levy capacity this year to build it into the budget this year, so that it's there as part of the start for next year's budget, we can do it under article two, or we leave it here under article 10. Bottom line, we only need 21,6, we don't need that 33,1.
So I would, I would put forth too, I mean, my thinking would be that, given the amounts in recent years we've turned over to free cash at the end of the year, that this could probably be found, I understand it's not in the appropriate line item currently, but that it could be found within the current fiscal year budget without either raising taxes or going free cash.
The third option.
So just, I had wondered beforehand, why would, and, and I'm not hearing any reason, why would we not put it into the operating budget? It seems to make sense, so.
Well, moving forward, it would make sense to put it in the operating budget.
Yeah, no, I, I...
I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I heard what you said, but I think Allison's point was also, yeah.
I'll look for direction from, from, after the finance committee discusses it, and we'll do whatever you direct us to do. Any other questions on that? The stormwater strategy, 15,000, Tom's had to answer any questions you have, but basically to comply with the MS4 permit and to do the work that we need to do to maintain our stormwater system to comply with that permit. system, to comply with that permit, you know, we're looking at between a quarter million and a half a million dollars a year to, to, to do this work. That's a major expenditure, we need to figure out how to fund it. So instead of just coming up with a plan, we want to bring in a consultant that knows what they're doing to help us formulate that plan, schedule public hearings, get public input, to ultimately bring it back to the town meeting for, for, for discussion. So we want the 15, we're asking, respectfully asking for the $15,000 out of free cash this year to bring on a consultant to work with Tom and me and the board to formulate a plan moving forward. So that's the purpose of the article. Tom is here to answer any specific questions relative to the stormwater permit, since he's ultimately responsible for it.
Becky? Yeah, so I do have questions about this, and I, I want to say, it's a good thing, and we need to do it. When you say we want to hire a consultant, is it to, I understood at first, the consultant was to help us figure out how to pay for this?
Correct.
Or is it to help us figure out how to do what we have to do?
No, how to, how to pay for it, because part of that 250 to 500 a year would be to bring an engineer on board through the bid process to, for, you know, to, to actually design some of the work that we need to do to upgrade the stormwater system, to comply with DEB standards. This is just to figure out how to pay for that.
So is there, just talking in the bigger picture of how we go about this, is this something that Monitius Regional Planning can help us with? Are they doing any of this work?
They, they do help with certain aspects, I mean, they've developed some apps that help us do some of our reporting, they do help with components, they don't come in and do your, do your work for you. What this is going to do is, it's going to, there's, there's two ways, there's three ways to pay for this, to pay for it out of the operating budget, which we can't do anymore. We've been complying with MS4 permits for the last eight years, I've done it all in-house, we've done it with the Stormwater Committee, and then just our own forces and stuff like that. Now that we've come into the new permit, there's a lot more new requirements on how much sand, can you catch basins, testing, reporting, stuff that's just beyond what we can do now, including equipment. The three, so the three ways to do it, operating budget, revolving funds, or enterprise funds. So, we're trying to find out which is going to be the best strategy for us, I'm assuming it's going to be either an enterprise fund or some type of revolving fund, which will be, basically be a fee for each parcel, either $10 or $15 a year that goes into, into a pot, that's going to be used for engineering, a capital, part of a capital program, and then all our testing and all, all the other stuff we have.
As, as I told the board last week, you know, the towns of Westford and Pepro have put surcharges on tax bills as part of the plan, $15, $15 a quarter or something like that.
Well, in Westford, it depends on the size of the lot.
Yeah.
No, well, most of it...
It's scaled.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Most of it, well, that's what's gradual, you have to find out, most of it is just a per lot dollar.
Yeah, no, I'm just pointing out, what, what was an article in the Lowell Sun about...
I saw that.
Yeah, Westford does it based on the size of the lot.
Very clear that...
They go from like $50 up to $115, depending on how big the lot is, it's not...
So that's what this engineer's going to help us formulate. We want to be fair, we want to schedule public hearings, we want public input, because this is a major expenditure, but we don't do this, we're subject to pretty significant fines if we don't comply, so this is something we have to do.
So as, as far as the actual work of what we have to do, which, in addition to figuring out how we're going to pay for it, is doing the actual work, I believe that the Watershed Association is already doing some studies about this as, because climate change means there's going to be more stormwater runoff, and I think they're already studying some aspects of culverts, size, and all that, so it'd be worth, at some point, getting in touch with them.
I see the stuff that they've been doing, a lot of, most of the stuff that we utilize indirectly from there right now is the testing that they do, because whenever we have to do water monitor, water quality testing in ones that we do have to test, they do, and I'm lucky I'm able to use those.
Yeah, they're doing, it's a slightly different thing that they are actually doing as a climate change preparedness effort, is understanding the size of culverts and are they big enough, things like that. Our Stormwater Committee will still be involved in this, or are we going to have to step up and have way more?
They'll still be involved. And our Stormwater Inspector is an expert.
And I guess you, yeah, to my first question, which is, this is a DPW task, you're going to be in charge?
Yeah, we are. Like I said, a lot of this funding now is going to be engineering, testing, this is stuff that we're not capable of, and probably a capital component as well, but we'll constantly clean the catch basins, drenching up the culverts, and the good house peeping, and the average, and the public education, that's still on us.
So, assuming that we pass this article to get funding to hire a consultant, then we have to do that through open bidding, is that right?
We will get quotes, you know, engineering services are actually exempt from 30B, but we always get quotes when we, when we make a decision, so we've already reached out to a couple of firms, that's how we came up with the $15,000 number, so we'll have, we'll have something for you on that.
Okay.
Been looking for it, and then we'll probably be back at spring town meeting with their recommendation for which way to go for it and to start July first.
And then, so the town would then have to vote?
Town meeting, yeah, I was surprised, Westford, the Select Board did it without town meeting vote, which shocked me. I think this is something Tom Eing has to weigh in on.
And, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, town meeting would have to vote on hiring the consultant?
Nope.
Or vote on what the consultant, the consultant's recommendations?
Correct.
That have to be adopted?
Correct.
Whether we create an enterprise fund or revolving fund, whichever way we decide to go.
Okay, so, just, this is on top of what some rate, water rate payers are maybe going to be paying a huge amount?
Well, this will be, this is for everybody.
This is town-wide.
And this is for everybody, exactly.
This is town-wide.
Yes, I understand.
Rain tax, as we shall call it, just to call it.
A rain tax?
Rain tax.
Yeah, a rain tax, yeah. Any other questions? Anything from the FinCon? Article 12 is to amend the bylaws to ban single-use plastic bags, I think the board has discussed this at nauseam.
Yeah, I had a question about what's covered, and looking at page eight of the draft warrant under 200-2, it talks about a bag that contains or wraps food to retain moisture. The reason I'm raising it is today I might gave myself a ham and cheese sandwich, and the ham came in a Ziploc bag, and the cheese came in a Ziploc bag.
Was it good?
It was great. I didn't put mustard on it this time. Anyway, and they have the price on it and the weight. So my question is, does this mean they can't use Ziploc bags for meat and cheese, the way this is worded, it seems to say it?
Which, where, on page eight, number five?
A bag, B, product bag. I assume that's not excluded, that's definition of what's required, right?
No, those are the ones that are, are allowed, I think. That, that's not...
That's allowed, okay. Then I misread it. Okay.
I, I think because it says, if you go up, is that the main article? A product bag isn't...
Where is that, Becky?
Well, I don't know for sure, that's why I'm asking to go up. I, I think that when we went through this before...
These are the definitions.
These are the definitions, and those are, are still allowed, the product bag.
Right, right there.
I don't...
It's a checkout bag that's not allowed.
But I don't see where that's in here. I understand what you're saying, I don't know...
If the store provides product bags to customers, the bag shall comply with the requirements.
Right. So it's going to get a recyclable paper bag of cheese.
Okay, so, can you go up more? Go up further.
For some reason, I don't see how...
Those are exclusive definition.
So the definition says, this is what a product bag is.
Right.
And then when you go down here, that if a store provides a product bag, the bag shall comply with the requirements of either being a reusable bag, a recyclable paper bag, or a compostable bag.
Okay, but up at the beginning, does it say what is not allowed?
No.
Single-use plastic bags.
Single-use plastic bags. That's correct.
That's the goal. So where is the actual what's not allowed language?
Right there.
No store in town shall provide any customer a single-use plastic checkout bag. Existing stock has to be phased out within six months. If a store provides checkout bags, may only provide reusable bags, recyclable bags, or compost, compostable bags, and if a store provides a product bag to customers, the bags shall comply with the requirements of being either reusable, recyclable, or combust-
Compostable.
I said combustible.
So...
That'd be cool.
I do not want combustible bags.
So, Art?
Compostable.
May, I just want, you may not have been at the meeting when we discussed this, we chose to use absolutely the same language that has already been approved by the Attorney General in another town.
Correct.
So that we would not be in a position of writing something that turned out to not be allowed. So I think this has been through the test of, of time already.
I think as long as your cheese in your handbag is a compostable plastic bag, then they can provide you the product in that bag.
Right.
However...
Or it's recyclable.
The intention is the checkout bags to eliminate.
So we, we are indeed then, from the current read of this, requiring that the grocery stores in town change to reusable, recyclable paper, or compostable bags for deli meat?
Correct.
We don't know that it's a change, that they may be...
They may already be doing that.
They may already be reusable or recyclable or compostable.
All right, please stop having cheese sandwiches.
Bring your bags back for reuse, then we're good.
Any other questions? Article 13 is the trip of property, this article authorizes the Conservation Commission to apply for a land program grant to offset the cost of acquiring the parcel. It's a 42-acre parcel with frontage on Martins Pond Road, I put maps in your packet, we'll get to those.
Thank you.
The cost of the acquisition is $400,000 with an anticipated grant reimbursement approved of approximately $243,000. Josh asked last week where the property falls on the priority ranking. It is a Priority 2, which is a land of high value for protection because the parcels contain important natural resources or suitable for other municipal uses. The Commission, however, has not undergone an update of the list in at least 18 years. Nick feels that this parcel would likely score higher if it were to be looked at now because they excluded the house and the driveway and the septic system. So they cut that out of, of the lot, so they don't, they're not buying that particular piece. So, Nick feels that this parcel should be ranked higher than, than the previous ranking, so I think, Josh, that was a question that you asked last week as well?
That was a question I asked, which leads me to another question.
This is the location of the property.
I did see on page seven of 50, where you have lot one, 7.8 acres that was cut out, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Doesn't that create a landlocked parcel, or is there an easement over the conservation land that the Commission will be buying?
I would defer to Bruce.
Yeah, so there'll be two parcels, and they'll both have frontage on Martins Pond Road.
So one will have frontage of like 60 feet or whatever?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's a ham and head lot?
That's correct.
So has it been created yet, or will it be created?
Is it approved by the State Department? I don't think that hasn't been recorded yet, once it's recorded, it will be created.
Thank you. Thank you, Takashi. Allison, Bruce has it?
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, in terms of priority, you may be aware that Brooks Orchard was recently sold, and the new owners have requested that the public access that was granted by the previous owner be extinguished. And therefore, having this parcel would actually provide the connectivity that would have been lost to get from Williams Barn in Chickapi Row over to Martins Pond Road, because you can see there's a connection on this parcel, on this proposed parcel, to the existing Williams Barn, Williams Barn, Sorhaw Woods parcel. So that's a new development that I think makes the parcel even more important in terms of an acquisition.
Mark, or Bruce maybe, can you clarify where we're, I, I don't intuitively see where Williams Barn is or what we're connecting.
Yeah, I think there was a previous...
Previous slide.
There you go. All right, you see the parcel as outlined in bold?
This is the parcel here.
In the upper right-hand corner, there's, there's a common border with the Williams Barn parcel, which is where the cursor's sitting.
Over here?
No, no.
Oh, here. No, no, top, upper right-hand corner of the parcel in bold, right there.
Yeah, there it is. That's your connection.
And this is, sorry, I have a number of questions, but this is connectivity for kind of hiking and public use, or for animals, or?
Yeah, that would be equestrians, pedestrians, bicyclists.
Nature. Bobcats, fisher cats.
So the bobcats will read a sign that says this is the way to get from one parcel to another?
Bobcats don't need permits.
Oh, okay.
Unless they're crossing a wetland.
So for me, where the...
Different kinds of bobcats.
The article request is really to request reimbursement or a grant application?
Correct. The Commission can buy this for $400,000 right now without any debate, but to apply for a land grant, it requires Tom Eing approval.
Understood. So I would, I would support the grant, I have some concerns about why Conservation is purchasing land based on an 18-year-old list that hasn't been updated. And then, there was one piece in the report that talked about potential municipal needs, which was also a little concerning, as I don't think any have been identified, but...
Newell?
Can I ask? Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Bruce, how come the Commission hasn't updated their priority list in 18 years?
Well, I think we're in the process of doing that because we just, we wrote the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which is the exercise in which we actually review these parcels. I'm not sure it hasn't been updated in 18 years, it just hasn't changed in 18 years.
Maybe I misunderstood what Nick had said to me.
It may have been reviewed every, every year, but not necessarily changed, I think that's what Bruce is saying.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, the changes would be, for instance, surrendered form, that was a high priority parcel, but once you acquire it, it falls off the priority list, but the rest of the priority list hasn't changed never.
Gotcha.
The other thing that will happen is the priority list is actually bought by a developer and developed, in which case that falls off. But in terms of the remainder of the parcels on the list, it hasn't changed.
Any other questions on this one? All right.
Okay, we're on my, Article 14. This is a revolving fund request from the DPW Director, and this would basically allow for the fees collected on the glass plant that was purchased through a grant last year that's been very successful. That money, instead of going into the general fund, will go into this revolving fund, and Tom can use it for repair and maintenance, because the, the blades have to be replaced so often, and instead of coming for an appropriation each year, we're going to use the money generated from that plant to fix that, so I think this, this makes perfect sense. So anything you want to add to that?
No, that's, that's fine.
Questions, comments? All right, 15.
As I said to the board last week, this is a very interesting proposal from our Council and Agent Director who is here. Kathy, if you want to come up or speak from there, to talk about your proposal. Thank you. Yes, explain it. Nope, I'll let you explain.
So, so the question is to raise, establish a revolving fund, that money through, in the new building, we're going to have a room with exercise equipment, there'll be eight different machines in the equipment in the room. There's a $600 a year service agreement to service the equipment, and then over time, the equipment will break down, need to be repaired, and maybe even future replaced. So this revolving fund will be a, essentially a membership that people will pay, a user fee to use the equipment, the money will go in there and then pay any costs that occur.
What's your anticipated annual fee for the membership?
So, their, their fees vary from center to center, we have noticed some senior centers, their fees go up every year, I'd like to keep it as low as possible. For example, in Chelmsford, it's $120 a year, in Westford, it's $65 a year. In Westford, it's sixty-five dollars a year to use their gym. We've talked about anywhere from thirty-five to fifty dollars a year. That's, at fifty dollars a year, that's a dollar a week for someone to use the equipment. I think that's really a very reasonable fee to ask people. We would separate that into two different charges. So you could pay in six months, twenty-five dollars one, six months, twenty-five another. Or you could pay it all at once. We would offer support, partial scholarships, if you will, to people that need help to pay that. But we do think it's a reasonable amount to maintain the equipment.
Becky?
So I spoke about this last week and I, it was a new idea, it seemed to me, and I wasn't sure that it was a good one. In the interim, I have had several conversations at the senior luncheon on nine eleven. And I realized that it isn't such a new idea because exercise classes and yoga classes and all have been happening there for a very small fee for some time. So, and, and it is true that you can't go anyplace else in town and use this kind of equipment without paying some kind of a fee. And I think, you know, a twenty-five or fifty-dollar fee is way lower than anyplace else. And it's just a difference between paying a, you know, three dollars per yoga class or paying for, to be able to come in at any time and use, or any time within certain hours, whatever, to use the equipment. So I think it's a good idea and I think we should do this.
So our intention is right now the equipment, we don't, we're not going to start the fees until January first. Get into the building and get used to a routine and let people try the equipment and see what's in that beginning in January and institute that, that fee. It is our hope that in the spring, we're going to start opening one evening a week and then maybe, you know, progress into more than one, one evening a week to have the equipment available for people.
Other thoughts, comments?
I just think it's a win-win for everybody, for seniors, stay healthy, the costs are low. Help with the maintenance fees. Lots of the seniors would get reimbursed too from insurance companies.
Most insurance companies.
I think they reimburse up to a hundred and fifty bucks, so.
We often provide receipts for us.
So there are a lot of senior centers that don't even have fitness equipment.
The equipment is ADA compliant, so that the seats, for example, like the leg press and the chest press, the seat comes off, so a wheelchair can go up to it, so somebody in a wheelchair can also use the equipment.
Anybody in town over sixty can use the gym for a dollar.
Right now, that's our policy, but we really would like to expand that, to have that open to other people in town.
John?
If you haven't already done so, please think through how you will deal with a theoretical, at this point, situation where somebody from Shirley decides, this is a nice place to work out and it's just over the bridge.
Yeah, it's actually going to happen.
So is it open?
Other towns charge additional fees for out-of-town members.
Okay, so you're going to have to establish.
So we'll both talk about that in the council and agent court, how they want to do that.
Just want to make sure we are prepared for that because it'll happen.
It'll absolutely happen, sure.
Did you have a question, Josh?
Well, no, yes, I do. I support this, I think it makes a lot of sense. The one thing I strongly suggest though is that you get a waiver of liability form for all, everybody to use that they must sign before they use that gym.
They, there's a whole form they have to get out, physicians permission to participate, and also they have to be trained before they can just go in and use the equipment.
Well, this, is there any other questions on this other? Well, Kathy's here. Part of our ongoing issues listed, the senior center construction. I'd like to update the board now and the finance committee if that's okay. The punch list work is going to be reviewed on September twenty-fourth. I had the chance to bring John and Allison down there last week to view it. It's almost done, it's beautiful, it's going to be a spectacular senior center for the town. Greg did a great job designing it and Nelko at the end of the day did a nice job building it. We hope to have the, well, no, we don't hope. We will have the senior, senior center open on October twenty-second. That's the plan, to have them moved in around that time. And then there will be a open, like a ribbon-cutting open house ceremony scheduled for.
Dedication open house.
Dedication for November.
November second, dedication at one o'clock, and then an open house up until four.
That's a Saturday, for those of you interested. But I will tell you, this is going to be a beautiful center for our residents. And it's just a nice thank you to the taxpayers for supporting this project. It really came out great.
Sounds good. Not a question so much, but, and I'm certainly in the minority. I have a little bit of a philosophical issue with this. I think that the, the annual fees can be coming out of operating and the replacement should come out of capital. I think that this sounds like a bit of an accounting type issue for tracking, there's a cost there. And then that if this were to actually discourage anyone from using it, that just seems like a real shame, but.
And you know what, we won't, people will have an opportunity that if they can pay that fee, they can go confidentially to our outreach coordinator and talk to her, as with all our programs, that no one's to come because of money, and they can talk to her confidentially. No one will know but her. And, and the other option is to not do that. I can't support that in the current budget of the council on aging. This is a way to not increase, you know, a fee to taxpayers. Everything in our building is not free. We do have our exercise programs. It would be an exorbitant budget if we had to pay instructors through our operating budget.
I would ask the board to reopen the public hearing on Amelia Way road layout.
So move.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, so the board understands Amelia Way is located off of Townsend Road. There is the locust map. The road layout, well, this is a little bit too big to see, I'll shrink it down a little bit. As you can see, it's, how many lots, Tarkashe? Six lots. It has been built to subdivision standards. It has been reviewed by the town engineer, it has been reviewed by our public works director. The planning board met last week, signed off on the compliance with the subdivision rules and regs. Tom Delaney, our public works director, has approved it as well. It is ready to be accepted as a town way. And you can see a memo that I had put in your packet and I sent out separately to the board and then added to the packet. Shows that at the September twelfth meeting, the planning board voting unanimously to recommend the select board layout Amelia Way. The public works director is in concurrence with the planning board. And I know, John, you had asked last week to make sure you had that documentation, so there it is. So I would ask the board to open it up to public input. And if there isn't any, I would ask the board to consider voting to accept the layout.
All right, is there any public comment?
Well, Tarkashe, Tommy, here to answer questions.
All right, Josh?
Yeah, this is an older subdivision that's taken, if my memory serves me right, somewhere fifteen to eighteen years to complete from the time the planning board approved it.
Dozens of owners and dozens of contractors.
So I was on the planning board when this was approved and that was a long time ago. No, at least fifteen years-ish. So this has been around a long time. And that binder course for the subgrade underneath that roadway was laid a long time ago, exposed to the weather. Have they done any test corrings on this to make sure that you're not going to inherit a road that you're going to be fixing in the near future?
Actually, I've ripped it up on the way to the pavement.
I wasn't aware of that, that's why I'm getting at it, it was pretty old.
I don't know, you know, forty of them. No, they did, because we got, oh, we cracked them on the drive in and we got, we actually started taking them on and they wanted every day, one, save a portion of, the other one down the hill there. Yeah, they had to do a portion of that, and rip that driveway every day, but it was just sat too long.
So both you and the town's consulting engineer are comfortable accepting the condition of the pavement, catch bases, everything?
Yeah, the top quotes only went on there for top roads from that last year.
Other questions?
If there are no other questions, I ask the board to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would then ask the select board to vote to accept the layout and recommend to the two thousand nineteen fall town meeting that they accept Amelia Way as a town way.
Do we need to do an eminent domain taking as part of this?
I do not believe so, but we do have wording in the article that will allow us to do that if necessary. I don't believe there are any title issues or anything like that on the roadway, Tarkashe? I don't believe there are.
But it used to be years ago when we accepted a public way and we did the layout of the road and the town took responsibility. For the fee of one dollar, the language used to be in there, an eminent domain taking for, and from certain meets and bounds and things like that. I just, you might want to, when you have your meeting with town council, make sure that that language.
Will do.
Does or does not need to be included?
Will do.
Would someone like to make the motion, Mark?
I move that we accept the layout of Amelia Way as approved by the planning board and DPW director.
And do we need to move it forward to town meeting?
And recommend acceptance at town meeting.
And recommend acceptance at fall town meeting two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All right, any questions for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, marking Bird Hill Road, the planning board will be meeting with the developer on.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
We already did, before we voted.
We did, okay, thank you.
The planning board, the planning board will be holding a hearing on this road on September twenty-sixth. Don will be advertising the public road layout hearing for the select board on October seventh because you need to have your votes at least seven days prior to town meeting. We're not meeting on the fourteenth. So if everything goes according to Hoyle with the planning board, we will have a road layout hearing on this road on, on the seventh of October. My understanding from Tarkashe this afternoon, there was like four minor issues that needed to be resolved. And the planning board and the public works director will review those on September twenty-sixth and have a recommendation to the select board on October seventh. Any questions on that? Okay, if every article passes as proposed, the total amount of free cash appropriated would be eight twenty-six, seven ninety-six, leaving a balance of five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in, in free cash. It'll actually be five hundred and eight thousand, two hundred dollars based on the free cash certification.
You came pretty close. You came pretty close.
Well, Patricia is usually spot on, so I'm very comfortable giving these numbers to the board. So that's where we are. The remaining free cash, we want to keep a balance of around two hundred thousand in there, as you know. At the town meeting in the spring, we will be asking for about a hundred thousand to continue our band as you pay program on debt service. We will be asking for about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for our OPEB liability. And then maybe between, depending on the reviews and everything, between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars for department head salary adjustments. And that will leave us a balance of about two hundred thousand dollars of free cash at the end of the year, based on this plan.
So that fifty thousand dollars you were requesting for the assessors overlay, that's no longer being requested, is that correct?
I'm still requesting that.
As part of the budget or as part of?
As part of when we set the recap. You'll have that debate when you set the tax rate for fiscal nineteen sometime in November. It has nothing to do with this town meeting.
Originally it did.
No, no, I was just telling you what my plan was on the.
Oh, okay.
When you, the, setting the overlay is what happens when you lay out the, when you have the tax classification here. Town meeting doesn't weigh in on that. So you set the tax rate, Josh. Town meeting doesn't set the overlay amount. So, that said, I would ask the board to close the public hearing for the two thousand nineteen fall town meeting.
Can I object to that?
If you'll explain why.
Because the FinCom, I believe, you may be meeting on some financial. You're going to meet on some financial issues and based on the input that the finance committee gives, we should keep the public hearing open for one more week, just in case we get some feedback. And if we were to close it, it might complicate things. So do you mind if we continue it for one week? That's my, just being cautious.
And also, next week, I'm going to ask the board, I know, John, you're not going to be here next week. You can probably give me your information before you leave, but your positions on the articles, I was going to schedule that for next week's meeting as well.
So I move that we continue the public hearing to Monday, September twenty-third at seven fifteen PM, is that fair? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank the department heads for being here tonight and answering questions, I really appreciate it. So thank you very much. The final thing I have in my town manager's report, I've appointed Donald Koski to the Grotton Country Club Pro Shop staff. I would ask the board to ratify that appointment this evening, please.
I move that we ratify the town manager's appointment of Donald Koski to the golf club pro shop.
Pro shop staff.
Staff. Country club.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
One question.
John?
This is a seasonal appointment?
Yeah, through the end of the season, which is November, we need some help.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The, the other thing, I'll take it up on the ongoing issues update, so I'm done, thank you.
All righty, and we have concluded our public hearings. So under other business, we have the question of the select board meeting packet. I think as we've, we've had a, a lot of this discussion already, this shouldn't be too lengthy. I think we've all received some comments and such. So I'll open it there, I guess. John, did you have an idea to share with us, or is that?
I do. And I put it on paper as I tried to have a logical way of explaining things, so. This is similar to some things Mark has asked for.
Is there an extra one that Connie can use?
Sure. Make sure John gets one for the minute, so. So I'm supportive that we make this information available. And I tried to come up with a, an approach that would make it available, but at the same time, not overwhelm the resources that we have for putting the information together and getting it out to people. So what I'm suggesting is that we schedule and post the agenda in accordance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law separately. That for each general, and it's also called, I hear it called, regular select board meeting, to create a preliminary select board information package that will contain the town manager's report and all other documentation provided by the town manager to select board members in preparation for the meeting. In the header of the preliminary select board information package and on the website, place the following message, or similar words to this effect. This is the select board's preliminary preparation information package. The content of this package is subject to change between when it is released and the start of the select board meeting. Such changes will not be posted to the website before the meeting. If you see an item or items in the preliminary prep package that are important to you, please attend the meeting in person. We will post each preliminary package on the homepage of the town website at the same time it is distributed to the select board. Usually, it's available sometime on the previous Tuesday afternoon or Friday morning.
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday afternoon or Friday morning for the following Monday meeting. So there's not a lot of time between when it, when it's released and sent to us and the meeting. And they happen to be weekend days. So I do not support trying to keep that updated once we put it out because we're only going two days, two non-working days to get there. And, and I wanted to point out that as allowed and required by law, all select board information about executive session, select board meetings, except the agenda, will never be posted on the website or made available to the public except and until the minutes of the meeting are released for public consumption. So I think this is something that addresses what people are looking for and at the same time, gives us a very manageable approach so that people are going to get the same information that we get at about the same, it'll be available about the same time that it's available to us.
Responses, questions, comments?
John, thank you for putting this together. This conveys a lot of the thoughts that I've been. This conveys a, a lot of the thoughts that I've been thinking, and it's nice to have this in front of us for this evening. But, but taking this a step further, you know, until recently, it really never crossed my mind that the information that I got to review as a selectman was not available to the public, at least posted online, unless somebody specifically called me, or called one of you, or called the town manager's office to request more information about an upcoming and agenda item. And I, I think that that puts the public at a major disadvantage in a lot of situations. For better or worse, you know, the quality of, of good government is demonstrated through good governance, and good governance is transparency. And the more transparent we can be through our government, the better example we can set for governments and organizations that do not show that transparency, which frustrates the crap out of me. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, my wife Amy and I were bamboozled by a previous board of selectmen that was sitting here at a former rendition of this table, which was located downstairs. Backroom deals were made and had that information that that previous board of selectmen been part of a packet before they made a decision, which adversely affected my family. I would have been equipped, along with my wife, to maybe sway the selectmen at the time to not have entered into such a decision, which ultimately costs over seventy thousand dollars in litigation on behalf of my wife and myself. So, that was the founding and primary reason that I chose to run for this board in the first place, and run for public office. And I think that if this information is out there, it may negate the need for somebody in the future to get involved in finding out information after the fact, by having that information in front of them. And I do understand from Dawn's perspective and from Mark's perspective, that it will be more cumbersome. However, if it complies with what John has in his recommendations, it's no more work than is already being performed right now to give us the packets, other than redacting things that may be for executive session. So I hope you all will support this, so we can release these packets. Thank you.
Becky.
Yeah, I'm definitely grateful, John, for you to put it in writing. This is definitely what I think is the right thing for us to do, as I have said here before. And I also want to thank the people who did take the time to write to us and share their opinions about this. I think for me, I was particularly impressed and had not actually thought about the fact that there are people who watch our meetings and watch and stick with it through the whole thing, and watch at home on television, and that they have a rather difficult time understanding what we're talking about sometimes, because if the camera, the TV camera's not focused on the screen, they don't know what we're talking about, the screen changes, we're flipping it up and down. So I, I think this is in the service of good government, we want people to be informed. We have people who are actually trying to be informed by watching us on television, and now, now we can actually share the information and make it easier for those of people who are in the room, as well as people who are at home watching, if we vote for this, so yes, I'm in favor of this.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt, as, as outlined in this handout from member John Geiger, that we adopt the practice of posting select board meeting preparation information packages and sharing them publicly via the town website at the same time that they're distributed to the board members.
Yeah, let's get a, does someone wanna second that motion, and then we'll discuss it. I will second that motion for discussion purposes. Can you just grab the microphone?
Excuse me, Hoddle. Or you can just.
Yeah, you can just use the one on the table then.
Grab that one there, don't get them too close together.
I was told that that's not a great one, I was told the fidelity on this is better.
Okay.
So I wanna, I'm grateful to hear the comments tonight in support of making the packets available to the public. I'm not gonna repeat what anyone else said, but I think that obviously openness and transparency in government is key, and allowing the public to, to read what you read gives us the ability to ask better questions, which gives you the ability to make better decisions. The other thing I would say is that this is the highest board in town, and if this board were to adopt unanimously, or, or agree with the motion to make the meeting packets public, you're leading by example, and you're giving other boards in town a reason to follow your lead and do the same thing, so that there's even more transparency in the government, so that people who appear before other boards know what's going on. The only thing I would ask that you consider at this point is that with respect to the caveat that, that John was talking about, it would be nice if the public were informed somehow if a packet was changed, or there was some kind of supplemental filing. I'm not asking that you post it, but if there's a way to let us know that, that there's an updated filing, that at least tells the public there might be something that they wanna go look at. I don't think it's important right now for purposes of your vote, but it's, it's more of a technical issue, I think, that can be addressed by the town manager and his staff. Anyway, from what I'm hearing tonight, it looks like members are in favor of this, and, and I hope that all of you vote in favor of it, and make it a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yeah, Josh?
So, two things. First, yeah, I want to thank Becky, select board member Pine, for bringing this back up. This was brought up years ago, and I'm disappointed it couldn't pass then, but appreciate that it looks like it may pass now. But with regard to the updated packet, in addition to the request that people had to know what was going to be discussed at a meeting in some detail, there was also a request that there be posted the, a copy of what actually was discussed. And this is, in fact, a supportive record of the information you had, for instance, charges that, or committees. The final charge that gets approved would be approved at this meeting, and if there are changes to the charge, charge between the draft that comes out initially and the final charge, it would be important as a matter of record to have that charge on the town website as attached to the agenda meeting. So I would like to ask that your plans include posting the final copy as well, just for a public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Josh.
Taking the first part first, and Alan's comments and, and what we're discussing. I'm very comfortable with this and the passion that it's in. And to address Jack's point, I understand why you ask it, and I understand why you want it, but certainly, if we were to adopt a policy or a procedure, such as the financial policies that were discussed earlier tonight, that we have sent back to the FinCom, while they may not be attached to the minutes that, that Dawn takes that we approve, certainly, the moment that that's approved as a policy or procedure, it goes into the section of the website where policies and procedures are in the final form. So I guess what I'm failing to understand is, is what might be in draft form as part of our packet and what's ultimately approved, why you feel like something like that would need to be attached to the minutes.
Sorry, I, I was not assuming that they'd be attached to the minutes. I really don't care how they would be attached. I think frequently, people go back and look at previous agenda to see what was discussed, and attached, if attached to that was the additional final details of, of what was discussed, it would be a useful completion of that artifact. The agenda on its own is very high level. You could go back to a draft and see that the draft actually somehow was quite different from what was discussed, and would leave a gap. It's really simply a matter of good bookkeeping, good practice, and of treating this as an, as a public record and having the accurate public record, well, having the public record be accurate, that's all.
So I, I think that now that you've clarified that, Dawn takes X amount of minutes, and she could write a book, 'cause she's very good at it. And I think if you just, Dawn, maybe, not that you don't pay attention to detail, 'cause you really do, but if there is a draft, and the draft was amended as part of the motion, whatever is different and whatever was adopted, if she could reference it in her minutes, and then you could find the document, I think that would take care of what it is you're looking for?
Well, operationally, I mean, that might, but operate, it would certainly make it a little cumbersome, and then people would have to sort of reconcile what the draft was versus what was finally approved. It's also called management by exception, which is generally considered to be a very difficult thing. If, if your practice was, at the end of a, when a, after you're sent your packet, and it's the final packet, that packet is just, it's a PDF. It's just a document. If you simply attach that document to some repository for the day's meeting, you're done. As opposed to having to remember, was there or wasn't there a change in the draft, and if there was, call it out. It's, I mean, I appreciate what you're trying to say, it's just in terms of simplicity, there, there is effectively no real additional work here.
John?
I'd like to suggest that we limit what we're gonna attempt to do in this first step here with what I agree. And as, as that unwinds and gets stable, we can explore other possibilities. The other item I'd like to make, if you choose to vote for this, and I, and I would suggest this get added to the, to the motion, is that we will unfold this on the October, for the October sixth meeting?
Seven.
September twenty-third meeting. Well, I wanna make sure we have, you have enough time to.
We will post the board votes tonight, we'll post the packet this Friday.
There you go.
Okay. But understand, you know, the first one, we may have some glitches, so, 'cause we, so that'll kinda be the test one, and the one after that, then we should be getting close to stable and predictable.
One question on your motion, though.
It's my motion.
Your mo, whose ever motion. Should this just be a vote, or does this need to be a policy?
I would think it's a policy.
That's what I'm thinking.
But we have to vote for the, I mean, this needs to be turned into a policy statement.
We could vote it tonight and then turn it into a policy statement?
That's what I'm thinking, it makes sense, and then that gives us a few meetings to try it out.
Agreed.
And then you could post a draft policy statement for full review.
It's true.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Heard it unanimously.
So onto the ongoing issues list, I've already talked about the senior center, I don't know if there are any other questions with that. With regards to town hall renovations, you will notice that Dawn and I are back in our office, Patricia and Sarah back in theirs, Melissa has moved upstairs. The assessors' window is almost done, we're just waiting for the glass to come in. The kitchen is done, I don't know if you had a chance to get in there and look at it, we're still sort of using that as a staging area. The electricity was disconnected from the trailers, I thought they were taking the trailers out, and I said to the board on an email this afternoon that the trailers would be removed from the parking lot tomorrow. I was informed that it's actually Friday that the trailers will be removed from the town hall parking lot, so we're gonna have to suffer with that reminder for a few more days, that the trailers are gonna be there. With regards to the town hall repairs, I had brought to the board two proposals to, you know, do the assessors' office and then move the kitchen upstairs. I said it'd be anywhere from, I think I said between five and ten thousand dollars for the two projects total. Does that sound familiar to the board?
It does to me.
So the, the cost is about eighty-nine hundred for both of those, so it came in where we thought they would, they would come in between electricians and woodworkers and everything else. The remaining thing that needs to be done is the floors of the town hall. To do the floors, there's some work that needs to be done, setting up dust shields to protect the offices, some demolition of taking up the old floors, and then putting down the new floors, sanding, putting down a coat, sanding it again, putting down another coat, coming back the following weekend and doing that. Because of the staging and everything else that the town employees have gone through, unless the board objects, I'm planning on closing town hall this Friday to allow the, the contractor to get in here at eight-thirty Friday instead of one o'clock on Friday. I wanna give them as much time over the weekend, you saw an email I sent you on the exact work that they have to do, and there really isn't a lot of time that they have to do the work, so it's my intention to close town hall Friday. Allison had asked what the cost of doing that is. Salary employees get paid for the week regardless of how many hours they work. The hourly employees that work, it'll be a cost of twelve hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents to pay them for the day. And I think this is just something, you know, they, they've suffered through noise, they've suffered through paint fumes and everything else, I think this, I don't want them to suffer anymore than what they've already done, so. Unless the board objects, that's my plan, but that's where we are with the, with the town hall renovations, we should be done in the next two weeks.
Any questions or objections?
I, I sent you an email.
Yep.
Can you see if you can put the claim for the lost wages into the insurance company?
Absolutely, we'll do that.
And you had said that this is a two-weekend thing.
Correct.
They'll be in next, this coming weekend, and again the following weekend.
Correct.
But they will not need to be in on Friday, the following weekend?
Friday, they're gonna come in Saturday, the following week. This, the, the first weekend, Becky, because of the demolition, setting up the, the dust barriers and everything else that has to be done, it's a lot more involved in the first weekend, second weekend not as bad.
So by the end of the first weekend, there'll be the first coat, all the new wood will be in.
Yep.
The dust will be cleaned up.
Yep.
And there'll be a coat of polyurethane or whatever they're gonna use on the floor. And then the following weekend, they'll come in, and I think they rough it up a little bit.
They sand it lightly, and then they put another coat.
And then they put another coat of the polyurethane or whatever they're gonna use on it, so, and then it's done. So I think it makes great sense.
Thank you. We already talked about the water department and the iron murnings, we talked about the Prescott School sprinkler system. Green Communities, just an update, the Rise Engineering is starting their energy audit tomorrow. They're gonna start with Town Hall and Williams Barn and Legion Hall to do the energy audit. The engineer will be here first thing tomorrow morning, so that's going on, and we're still on process to have that ready for our application at the end of October. With regards to the policy on major initiative planning, the board voted to amend that policy last week to make it a capital planning. Josh, Bud and I met Friday morning, we reviewed the policy, we made a couple of word changes, it'll be on your agenda for next Monday for final adoption. Dawn did reach out to all the applicants to let them know that it's changing. A couple of them got back and said regardless of the committee, they're still interested in serving, but we will send out after next week, whatever you adopt for final charge, we will send that out to them, re-advertise it, ask if they're still interested in serving, and then bring that back to the board.
I don't know, Mark, go ahead, Josh.
I was gonna say, and, the finance committee is going to amend their policies and procedures to look at any new initiative.
As part of the budget process.
As part of the budget process, up to fifty thousand dollars in one year, or aggregate of one hundred thousand dollars in three years.
So is that gonna show up in the policies?
It'll be, it'll be part of the budget message and the budget documents that go out to the departments.
So we didn't just wipe that out, that's.
No, still did. Finance committee said when they were here last week that they wanted to do that, and they will do that.
Right, but it's not gonna go into the.
It's not in the charge.
Financial policies that we were discussing.
It may, Becky, it may.
Hey, you could, you could put it in there, actually.
Sure. As a matter of fact, it would probably make sense to do that.
It would make sense to do that.
With regards to, I have no update on the charter, or we talked about the Route one nineteen crosswalk installation.
So now that that's there, I'm hoping that tomorrow morning, that sign that's now in the middle of the road in front of the soft and white? No, will be moved down to the intersection where the kids cross the street to go to school.
That's a great idea, John, that's, I agree with that. I know a guy who can make that happen.
I can, I'll put it in my truck and take it down there if I have to.
Are you volunteering?
No, I'm not. If it sits long enough, it'll disappear and appear, reappear down there, I guarantee you.
With regards to the Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, I will not be in the office tomorrow, I will be in Boston representing the town at the MSBA as we make a decision on who's going to be the architect on the project. I will alert the board as to what they decide. They may, there were eight applicants, we have a recommendation of a shortlist of three. They may have, you know, again, we're gonna be outvoting, there's three of us, thirteen of them, so we will make our case. Laura, Brian and I are prepared, we've, we've met, we've discussed it, we know what we wanna say. We'll make our presentation to the, to the committee, they may make a decision tomorrow, they may schedule an interview two weeks later.
How much are the architects looking for?
Huh?
How much money?
Uh, that's, it's already been decided, two hundred and twenty-five thousand for this part?
Yeah, it sounds right for this, for this piece.
Yeah, for this piece. It's already, it's, it's part of the. It's already, it's part of the money that the schools, no, it's actually more than that. $225,000 is what we paid the.
Left Field, right?
Paid Left Field, this will be like $500 for the designer.
Yeah, I don't know how far it.
But collectively, the money was already allocated.
The $7.50 was already allocated, correct.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure of that.
Correct.
So, here's a dumb question, do we know what we're asking the architect to design and where it's going to be?
That's part of the feasibility study. So, they, the designer comes in, works with the building committee and the OPM to actually do the feasibility study to decide, do we do an addition? Do we do a renovation? Do we, do we tear it down and build a new building? Do we put an addition on the middle school? All of that stuff is on the table. No decision has been made.
So, you hire an architect before you know what?
He's going to help us through the feasibility study.
It's how the MSBA requires the process be done.
Oh, interesting.
Yep. As far as the library roof repair, they've actually, you'll notice, starting tomorrow or Wednesday, you're going to see men in suits.
I thought it was Friday morning, but.
Men with suits.
Is it this Friday?
Soon.
Men without hats?
Men without hats. They have to do asbestos removal. It's non-friable, the public isn't in danger, but when you see people in suits.
You mean hazmat suits?
Hazmat suits, on the roof, I don't want anybody to think anybody's in danger. They're not, it's just a protocol you have to follow. So, that project is ongoing as well. And the highway garage renovations are going outstandingly well. That project is on time. We are not meeting tomorrow, which is our normal meeting, I've asked them to delay the meeting to Wednesday so I can be there, since I'm not going to be here tomorrow in the office. So, that's where we're at.
On that one with the pit, we discussed the pit.
We are filling in the pit and get it, correct. Yes, sir.
I want to suggest that we remove the Route 119 crosswear item, crosswalk installation item from here, but that we add the state mandated stormwater management funding.
Can we leave the crosswalk on until the town meeting vote, please? Please?
No, no, this, this was on here for Salt and Light, we can leave it on there and say it's also for down there, if you'd like.
Oh, I thought that's.
I thought that's why it was on there.
I thought it was on there.
I thought it was on there for the.
Okay, how about we can get rid of it as soon as we get the town meeting vote?
I thought we didn't want to call it.
I don't want to put MS4 permission on here.
Yeah. Well, the MS4 fundraising needs.
It'll do.
Can we also, at this point, take off the voting procedure? I had spoken with Becky, and we kind of agreed that this is not a huge priority at the moment.
I'll cross that off.
We may do an exercise at our workshop.
That's all I, uh.
All right. Does anyone have any board leaves on reports?
I forgot to mention at the beginning, an announcement that I had made last week, that the nonprofit council will be meeting on Friday morning of this week from 9:10 in the Prescott School.
I have one announcement.
Go ahead.
I wanted to thank specifically Evie and Desiree Masaladon for putting on a wonderful annual barbecue at the fire station this year for the seniors. I got to stop by at the very tail end of that, and.
9/11 responders.
Yes, and for the 9/11 responders, obviously. First responders, excuse me. But needless to say, annually, he does that, and he's a great benefactor to the community, so for all of those that helped and worked on that, it was very nice, so thank you.
All right, John?
The master plan implementation committee is drawing near completion of its work. We probably have maybe two more meetings, and we'll have delivered the report to the planning board. So, I think we're, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
That's great.
I'll also report that I, the Board of Health Chair and I are attempting to be in touch with each other, but we haven't actually succeeded yet.
Okay. Bruce, you heard it.
Yeah, I forgot to bring it up at the time, and I think it was Article 5 about the golf carts. Groton Electric has suggested or requested that the new golf carts, should they be purchased, should be electric?
Not hydrogen powered?
Something a little.
Yeah, electric would be preferred in terms of, we think, reasonable cost and helping keep the load in the town up, which distributes our fixed cost among more kilowatts.
I thought we had a green vehicle policy too. Didn't we just adopt that?
We have a lot of policies.
No, but we just did.
We did agree.
Green communities just is there.
Golf carts qualify under that policy, but we were looking to electric carts in the song.
Thank you. Any other liaison updates? All right, and this meeting is concluded. Thank you.